Good evening, this is Mike McCoo, Chairman of the Wellington Board of Finance, calling to order the regular meeting of October 21st, 2021 at 7:02 PM. We do not have any alternates to seat. We have four voting members present, which is our minimum for quorum. The other members, alternate Wolf, member Milos and member Cruzak all had notified me that they would be absent tonight and we have not, I've not had any contact from Brenda, so I'm assuming she's not coming as she hasn't attended the last few meetings. So we're going to get started. Approval of minutes, we're going to hold off on that for the moment. The minutes due to technology from the last meeting didn't get to me properly until yesterday. And I emailed them to the board this morning. They have to get posted to the town. We need time for board members to review them. And I am aware that we are still missing August minutes and I've been working hard to try to get them from the past secretary. If I don't succeed in the next couple of days, I will go through the recording and produce a seven minutes for us, so.
Oh, Mike. It's just, I know that they're not finalized or anything, but there, you know, there's a lot of, I just glancing through. There's a lot of names that are misspelled in different references like Peter Tanaka and.
Yeah.
And. Super Bond, okay.
Yes, I've corrected most of those already with Kelsey. So well, we'll get the version that goes out. You'll get a chance to review more and if we have edits, we can do them at the next meeting.
Yeah, she might want to just do a, you know, search and replace on.
Yeah, we did that already.
Okay.
Present to speak, public participation is desired and encouraged. Speakers will be limited to time and appropriateness of comments to maintain progress, stay on topic and maintain decorum. Is there anyone out there attending the meeting who would like to speak or present to speak? If you are, feel free to unmute and call your name. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. I just would like to make a note. I am the only one attending in the main room at the town office building. So I'm going to manage the electronics. I have the assistance of Kelsey, who is recording tonight as our secretary. She is working from her office, but I'm the only one in the room. So be patient with me while I move from screen to screen and between two computers. And also that's why I fortunately don't have to wear my masks. I'm the only one here, so. Okay, whole business, public health crisis update, a general update. I've been looking at what we have available for economic data. Of course, it's always changing some and depending who you talk to, there's different data. But there are some positives in Connecticut's favor. Because of Connecticut's high vaccine rate, the prediction is that the spread of the virus is having potentially less impact and will have less impact over this winter on the state of Connecticut. The house prices now, because they've climbed so strongly over the last year, have now exceeded the house prices in 2005 and 2006, which was right before the bubble burst going into oh seven, oh eight. So that has its ups and downs as well, but it's a positive for those people who can take advantage of that. And values up is usually for the most part a good thing. The August unemployment numbers came out the day after our previous meeting, of course, and they were showing Connecticut at a 6.1 for the state and Wellington at a 5.9. Positivity rates are staying down in this area, which is a good sign of public health in general. Because the Yukon area affects us a lot, today's report from Yukon was a point oh six percent positivity rate for 3,700 tests. And the state rate as of yesterday was 1.9% out of 20,500 tests. So that's what I've got anyway. Other, any other people with any updates, thoughts on general fiscal health and pandemic and all that? Erica, go ahead.
I had an Eastern Highlands Board of Directors meeting prior to this meeting. So I want to share one of the positives that came out of that is that they are gearing up for clinics and younger kids. So we'll see how that helps. In 10 months, they've held 140 clinics and 11,000 shots. There was a surplus that will hold towns flat to our last year's budget. So this year there had been an increase in the cost to every town. But because of some additional revenues that they saw, we made some budget changes at today's meeting. So we should see a $1,200 savings to what we had anticipated paying Eastern Highlands Health District. So that is a plus there.
Update on where you are with the American Rescue Plan. I think your ad hoc committee has had a meeting or two now.
We've had one, we were supposed to meet last Wednesday. There were some scheduled conflicts, so we're meeting this coming Monday at 1:00 PM. I will add not on the ARP funds, but on the CARES money that we had received. And I apologize, I'm going to pull up that documentation from Donna. We originally had been told the money had to be spent by December 30th, 2020. So we worked really hard to spend all of our dollars before that time and FEMA was reimbursing at 75%. FEMA ended up reimbursing our totals to 100%. So we received that FEMA grant or the remaining FEMA dollars. And so that left us with a favorable of $5,014.57 of the municipal CRF grant funds. So what we need to do is either encumber it or return it. And we don't want to return it. So I am looking at purchasing some additional computers that would be laptops that could be used here as a desktop while folks are here could take it if they had to work remotely in the event we find ourselves in another COVID-like situation. But what, because of the accounting and the difference in fiscal years, we received the CRF money in the last fiscal year. We'd be spending money in this fiscal year. So on the advice of our auditors, Donna has worked with them and we were speaking with OPM to make sure we cross all the right Ts and dot all the right Is. I'll be making those purchases out of my current year's budget. What would need to happen if that particular line item or department is overspent coming towards the end of the fiscal year? We may come back to you asking for a transfer into that department because the funds from FEMA go into revenue. So they don't go directly back into the budget, but we need to make the expense out of this year's expenditures. So I'll be making the purchases, we'll be documenting what they're for. If we have a favorable, we may not need to come to you for a transfer, the correct documentation on what the funds were for will be used. But if you hear us come back for a transfer for $5,014.57 because of CARES spending, we wanted you to be aware of that now. We definitely don't want to return any any grant funds if we don't have to.
Does the ARP money come into revenue too?
Yes. And we received that first lump payment already.
Any other board member comments, questions on this public health crisis update item one?
So this is an update on federal funding, American Rescue Plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, Erica, I sent you a message saying I wouldn't be able to make the next meeting. So my schedule has changed. So if you can't get me it after four o'clock in the afternoon, then the Board of Finance needs to find someone else to attend that.
Okay, Matt, I think the problem is that the rest of the members are on staff. And so after that time becomes difficult for staff level and being able to participate Monday evenings. They oftentimes have other meetings, so it becomes a little bit difficult. And that's when Mike is here in the building. So we do our best to try to get after 4:30, but during that daytime is best. So when we, we'll talk about it at our meeting on Monday. And if we think there needs to be something moving forward, bring it back to the board.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on this agenda item?
Can I ask, it's a little quasi in this, it could go in a good and welfare. But this board has allocated, worked with us to allocate dollars for AED devices in different town buildings and places such as the park. And so if Chief Moore could speak to what that has allowed, allowed the town to be recognized as.
Okay.
We were notified last Friday, the DPH Commissioner has finally signed off for Wellington to be a heart safe community. So they're going to come out and do a presentation at the Town Hall or the Town Office Building. We're just working on a date to do that.
Excellent.
Thank you to everybody that helped get that project off the ground and running.
I knew that took a lot of support by Chief Moore and then buy-in from everyone else to allocate dollars to put those AED devices. I'm happy to say we haven't had to put them to use yet, but they're here and people are ready to go. I see Peter is finally showing us where he's at.
Yeah.
It looks like he's on the moon.
I know.
That's, that's pretty cool. Oh, we lost them.
Yeah, I, I, I've got a limited data flow here, so I'm outside so I get a better signal.
Well, you're, if we have to choose between your lovely face and your lovely voice, we'll take the voice. Or nothing. Okay, anything else on this topic? All right, moving on to item two, ambulance service to the town of Union. Status is almost the same as last meeting. I was well overloaded for a while. I've gotten back into connection with the first selectman from Union and he, Erica and the chief. We're all working towards a meeting date either next week or the week after. And I will be inviting another Board of Finance member along as soon as we kind of close in on the date here. And so we will finally have the opportunity to sit down with the first selectman from Union and talk about what we've been talking about for the last few months. Any questions before I move on? Okay, item three, reports of representatives to other committees. School building committee, there have been a couple of meetings since our last Board of Finance meeting. And with the approval from the townspeople at the town meeting of the funding, the school building committee is moving forward on their processes. And I was unable to attend the school building committee meeting last night, so I don't have a detailed report. If anyone else here has anything to add, who may have attended that meeting, feel free to chime in now.
I could tell you last night, the committee worked on the, I'm sorry, the school enrollment study. So we agreed to move forward with Dr. Peter Prouder to do that work for us. And then there is a group, a working group of the board that's going to work on drafting the RFP for Owners Project Manager. And we had received information back from Colliers that they would be willing to take a look at our completed draft at no charge to us. So our working group's going to take the stab at it to attempt to save money there and they'll take a look at it. And then we'll put an RF, be putting an RFP out. Our next meeting is Wednesday, November 3rd.
Thank you. We seem to have lost Pete Tanaka. Oh, there he is. Never mind. I just lost him on my screen for a second. Okay, Board of Education bargaining agreement. I believe that is all resolved, is that correct? I think we talked about the last meeting that that was resolved. Okay, I'm getting nods from Erica and Phil. I'm going to remove that for the next meeting then. Thank you.
Do we know anything more than that?
I don't, I believe it was mentioned in sort of general terms at the last Board of Finance meeting, but I don't remember what that. It was not with exact percentages, no. Or not shared anyway.
Yeah, I was a representative of the Board of Finance to that, that committee and Mike gave a little short report last time. Phil, can you give us an update on, on what that percentage was?
Yeah, I'm just going to grab the machine.
All right. While we're waiting for Phil. Oh, nevermind, it's back already.
Oh, yeah, it was going to be quick. So each year was total cost was a 2.75% increase in total cost, meaning if they got step movements, that was the majority of the cost and then the rest of the money went to top step. And so that was basically the same for each of the three years. It was an extension of their contract, so there was no language changes. And the, so basically, give me one second. I believe two of the years there was step movement and then the third year, there was no step movement. And it was basically an increase of 2.75% across all the salary numbers. So that was the, the total, 2.75 over three years. Is what the agreement was each of the years.
Each of the years, so, so it's compounded, but it's about nine percent over, or compounded is about nine percent over, over three years. Given the way, and I remember I made the recommendation that we move to a third year on that. And given the way inflation is going, I think that is probably going to end up being a good move for the town of Wellington.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Steph.
Oh, I just said, thank you. Because I asked for the information.
Okay. All right, next is the Town Employee Bargaining Agreement. Pete Tanaka, if you're able to hear me. If you could tell me if there's an update on that.
There is an update on that. The, the side of the table has been meeting and Erica has been, been in discussion with some people on the other side. We have not had an official meeting yet because their union is having a difficulty with their lawyer. So we haven't had an official meeting yet, but we are working towards that end.
So Pete, since we, our, our side met at the beginning of the week, we seem to have some discussions with the union side. And we anticipate dates being set in November. So that was my latest information as of Tuesday afternoon. So I anticipate in the next couple of days, we should have some concrete dates finally. But as Peter said, there's been some issue, not with union side here on, onsite, but with their union representation.
Okay. Thank you both. And then I just had a small thing, the Region 19 Administrators Contract. Erica and I both tended, attended a sort of an introductory meeting where the heads of the finance boards and the chief administrators of each of the three towns of Region 19 were asked or were invited to come attend that sort of a introductory meeting saying, we're about to negotiate contracts for the Region 19 administrators. It's just a few people. And this is your opportunity to kind of hear about the process and tell us if you have anything to say. So I said that representing our board, basically that we we understand there's been a lot of extra pressure on the education system these last half because of COVID. And we value the system and the people. But that we also have a lot of things facing us in Wellington with between loss of revenue from crumbling foundations and still some unknowns about the pandemic and a lot of other major capital expenses coming up, including the, the possibility of renovating or building new schools. And we just hope that they would keep that in mind as they move forward. And that was pretty much the end of my involvement. And I don't know, Erica, if there's been anything since that meeting.
No, no, that was our opportunity as member towns to share kind of the state of our town and anything that we found needed to be important so they knew where we stood financially. And so I think most of the towns were on the same page with everything that's going on. And again, this is a smaller group, but larger than our administrators group.
Did you add anything to that, Erica? The sound was a little off, it was low.
Sorry, no, I just, you know, it was just the opportunity for our member towns to speak and share the state of our town. So, you know, we shared a lot of important.
I'm sorry, I mean, then that night, that meeting.
Oh, no.
Wow, so did you comment in that meeting at all, anything you want to share with us?
I don't think anything different than what you talked about, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Except that it was nice, we had an in-person, there was, the majority of folks were in person, so that was kind of different and nice. We still had to wear masks, but it was at least nice to be in the room with some folks.
Okay, any questions from the board members before we move to new business?
Just, I just wondered if there were any areas of concern in Ashford and Mansfield that they mentioned that you guys thought were notable in this discussion?
Nothing that you wouldn't expect, nothing.
Okay. You mean they have COVID there too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to new business, Board of Education Non-Lapsing Fund. Item A, the procedural discussion. At some point later on, we will have to look more at how this works. As time has progressed, the legislation that allows for and dictates how a non-lapsing fund is managed and the current Board of Ed policies do not exactly line up anymore. So they'll be working on that. And then we have to talk about allocation or transfer potentially tonight. So Phil, do you want to jump in here?
Sure, so in, in what Mike, Mike is speaking to is right now, the board policy, the way it's written is that the Board of Finance can authorize expenditures up to $20,000 in a single year from, from that account. Anything over $20,000, the Board of Finance, it would require Board of Finance approval and town meeting approval. And so I don't think this fund has been used a great deal. But where the issue falls is, and I think Peter Tanaka will, will agree with this, is that the first time this fund was created, when it was created, the discussion was really around trying to maintain MBR, not adding any money to the Board of Education budget. And really understanding that if there was an additional special education cost, such as an outplacement that was unbudgeted, the Board of Education budget would not be able to support that. Some districts, you know, put a placeholder in for an outplacement, just like they do for insurance. We have never done that. I'm not a firm believer in that because you have a non-lapsing account. The problem is, and I shared this with Mike, and this is why the Board of Education policy is, team is going to have to review this, is that the statute allows the board, once it, whatever money that you put into that, and you're the only group that can move money into the non-lapsing fund. Once it's there, it's supposed to be at the discretion of the Board of Education and it's got to fall into the statu- statutory requirement of how you're spending that money. The issue falls right now is that if it's special education related, such as an outplacement, and I will share with you that we do currently have an unbudgeted outplacement, which is typically in the, the ballpark of $100,000. You're going to have to, and I'd say you, the Board of Ed will have to pay for that either way. It's a requirement of special education. So it's an awkward thing because I can't answer questions on it. All I can say is there's an unbudgeted special education cost for an outplacement tuition. I can't give you any information about where it is, who it is, what it is. It's legally mandated. So to have a request go to eventually go to the Board of Finance and for you to approve it and then go to town meeting, it just seems a little odd in that specific situation. And so that specific situation is what I want to bring to the Board of Ed policy group to review because they, they write the policy. But I think just in all transparency, that's the situation. So the request this evening and the Board of Education has already, and I think Mike may have a motion from Donna, is that the Board of Ed, from the money that they're returning from last year's budget, they're requesting $64,000 approximately that from their 2021 budget to move into the non-lapsing fund, knowing that we anticipate we're going to be pulling $100,000 out of the non-lapsing fund. At some point this year, that request is going to come your way, depending on the adoption or if there's any changes to that policy. If that were to happen as of today, we would have to follow the Board of Ed policy, to have to go to the Board of Finance. It would then have to go to town meeting, which I think again is a weird kind of process when it comes to special education. Something else, you know, if you, if, if the board said, we want to do, you know, a $100,000 technology project and it wasn't in their budget, that would make sense to come maybe into a town meeting. Even though those funds have already been approved for education purposes, because you moved them in, I think it's just something we have to consider. So really the ask tonight is, and the Board of Ed approved this in their, their last meeting. And Donna has asked that this is really the time to do it because you would be, she's trying to close up the books for the, the last year. The, the balance, the current balance in the non-lapsing fund is around $204,000. The maximum that you can move into that account is, is dictated by Board Policy and State Law. So the most you could move in this year is 64,488. That is the number that the Board of Education approved in, for your request. And so that request is in front of you tonight. And again, the purpose of that money, I can tell you, it will be used, 100,000 of that at some point will either be approved by the board, depending on the policy, or it will come through you. But there will be a, an outplacement tuition that we will have to pay for that is unbudgeted.
Steph?
Yeah, I just want to understand the other numbers a little bit, Phil. One, one question is, what is the 192,000 savings represent? And the other one is, does that mean with the, with the outplacement 100,000, that that would come out of the existing non-lapsing in one way or another? And I understand what you're saying about the change in policy. But that, that does not come out of that 192,000. So what would be returned to the town is around 130, give or take, right? Okay, so what goes into the 192, though?
So the reason the, the board is, had the 190, and it actually was more than that. They made some decisions to, to spend some money on projects at the end of the year. But the end of the year number that's returning back to the town is 192,000. And really a lot of that was around openings and times with COVID where we had grant, some grant funding. But we had openings. I mean, there were ti- just periods of time and it's mainly staffing where we had openings that we couldn't fill. And so when you have an $80,000 staff member who's on top step, leave, go to another district and it's open for three, four months. There's significant savings and that's where it's not intentional. We're, you know, it's not like we're, we're, we don't need that person. It's just that it happens to be typically that it's in a shortage area. Math, science, any of the school psych, social worker, the Spanish. Those are the shortage areas. And, and when you're looking for an applicant, you're lucky if you get three applications. And so the majority of that savings that is coming back to you is, is really because of the staffing shortage. The staffing shortage, and the other reason is really, um, with some of the insurance savings. You don't know, you, you budget based of your, for your insurances. Based upon what you know, uh, about your pool of staff. When someone leaves and someone enters, if the person leaving had insurance and the perfect person coming in. Doesn't take insurance, there's savings there. And so that's the, the trade-off.
Thank you.
Yes, you're right, it's about 130,000, that would be, uh, our, that ballpark would be, go back to the town. The 64,000 would be transferred into the non-lapsing fund. And Steph, the total. That would be in there, the, would be, um, it would max out, it would be 268,860 dollars. And we anticipate 100,000 of that. Would come out this year for an outplacement to it, for the outplacement tuition.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that 100,000 that comes back out would mean you would end the year, the year without exceeding the 2%, right?
The, and this is where there's like a 2% to 3%. Either way, we're under the 2%, the 2% is only. The amount of, it's a little strange. The 2% that you can withdraw, um, from last year's, uh, I think it's this year's budget or last year's budget. Um, is the max, but the 64,000 is well under that.
Right.
You, so. Little convoluted with the state law matching to the, uh, policy. Bottom line is, there's, there's a request there for the 64,000, I think it's 64,488, Mike.
Uh, yeah.
And, uh, you know, you can expect at some point.
The way Donna, the way Donna wrote it is, um, 64,000, so I'm assuming she's giving you a $488 under buffer.
Like, like it says, 6, 64,488.
Yeah, that's.
I'm reading it, says suggested motion. Request the Board of Finance considered $64,000 even.
That's what you're looking at, Mike, is the board, the, that was, that's okay, I can explain it, Erica. That is the, the request that went, that, uh, the motion that Donna wrote for the Board of Education. However, the Board of Education approved. Um, when they said their motion, they asked for the full amount. And that full amount was 64,488.
Okay, all right. So this was older information, that's why.
In the body of that email, Mike, is her new suggested to you.
Yeah, okay, all right, I was looking at the sheet, okay, sorry.
No problem.
Okay, let me open the other. All the other sheets here.
I, I got a quick question, if you got it in a moment.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, so Phil. The asking the board for $100,000 to go to town meeting for special ed. Is, you feel that's. That's unusual because it's for special ed and we can't give any more information? I, I think that i- in this case, that may be enough information to get th- this thing passed, if you say. We have a student that needs placement, it's $100,000. We need it from the non-relapsing fund, I, I don't see any problems with getting that passed all the way through with no more questions asked, but I, that may be just me, I.
Can I make a comment, Peter? I think it puts you in a place of. People have the opportunity to ask any question they want at town meeting. And so while you understand it here, you wouldn't be able to shut down their opportunity to speak. And then it puts the superintendent in a place where it seems as though to someone, it may seem like he wouldn't, didn't want to answer the question, but he can't say anymore.
Right, I, I, I think, I think the fact that state law says that he can't answer any more questions, should shut down some of that, I mean, but. It, and, and, and we, we count on the, uh. The basic goodness of our town, so, I don't know.
So the other thing I would add, uh, Pete, to your comments is, uh, I think your comment is true that it would likely, um. It would likely go through, but when, when it comes time for us to discuss this more in detail, if the Board of Ed makes a change in their policy or whatever. We have to also look at what our. Procedural place in this is because we've already approved that budget. And brought it to people, and they've already approved it also. So it may be sort of duplicitous for us to go back in and re-approve something that's already approved, so I think that's. I think we have to talk about that when it comes back and it's time, if we have to. If we're in a position where we have to make decisions on a policy change. Um, we have to first wait and see what the Board of Ed does and make sure they've aligned their policy with state law. And then we'll have to determine if this is something. We have a. You know, whether we're really supposed to relitigate something we've already run through the system or not.
So we need to wait for some dominos to fall before they get to us.
Right, the only we're doing tonight is approving transfer of money within the normal process that we already are using.
Beautiful.
Because, how does it work, um? If you have a state mandated cost that really isn't a topic of discussion or decision. In the, in the town meeting form of government. And say if the town meeting. Vote goes against. Proceed, I mean, that, that just doesn't, that rub doesn't work as far as. You know, rational thought. Or legality. Unless I'm misunderstanding something, there's really no choice in it. And the other, the other question I would have, and I, I agree with Pete, I think our, you know, I think our town would be, you know. Graceful about it, generally speaking, but there could be. Knowledge in the community about a private situation in a family that has to do with this. That just sort of bursts out of someone's mouth. Um, that is bad bongos, as far as I'm concerned.
Phil, did you have a comment?
No, I think that's the point is because we're so small, if we were a super large district. Uh, I, you know, I don't think there's an issue because we're so small. Um, you don't want people talking about this because, you know, it gets to accusations of, of where it came from, but again. The point here was. And, and, you know, I think, Peter, you were on the board when this was, uh, the account was created. Um, and, and my point is. Look at, this is about transparency for me, I emailed Mike to say, look at. We may have identified an issue here, I want to let you know that I'm going to bring this to. The Policy Committee for Conversation, my expectation is they, there is also going to be communication back to you. Um, and, and maybe this is simply around, um, a line about special education related costs. Um, you know, because that's where you're writing outplacement, or you're, you're, you're writing something in the policy. To try and minimize the amount of conversation. That, um, can, would happen if you go to town meeting, that's really all it's about. Tonight is just, I wanted to share that with you, I shared it with Mike. Um, and the other part of that was that the board had the request for, um, the funds, because. We're in the boat this year where we, we are going to need the funds for the outplacement.
Okay, it, I, the, the fund was set up just before I was on the board, uh, so I, I missed the formation of it. And, and I do really appreciate the heads up on what's coming because it's always better to know ahead of time than to be blindsided. All right, thank you.
All right, since we're well into discussion already, um. I move that we. Approve a transfer of 64,488 dollars from the fiscal year 21 Board of Education budget. To the non-lapsing education fund.
Second.
Okay, more discussion. Matt?
Want to vote, do we have a quorum?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about that at the beginning of the meeting, we have four voting members here. You, Stephanie, Peter, and myself, and we need four, we need four for a quorum.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Was that my second, or was it Pete's second? Just for the record.
Um, you were the first second, Peter was the second second.
I, I claim lag, I have no problem with that, however.
It's a technological issue.
Any more discussion on the motion? All right. I'm going to. Call the vote, Stephanie.
Yes.
Peter Tanaka.
Yes.
Matt Clark?
Yes.
Mike McCoo is voting yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Okay, um. Item two of new business, September 2021 Revenue and Expense Report from the Treasurer. Has anyone had an opportunity to look at that yet? I'm moving somewhere here.
Yeah, I looked. Mike, do you want me to share it on the screen?
Yeah, can you put it on the screen, please, because I seem to wasn't in that on this computer again.
All right, the host, who's the host here? You just need to enable.
Right, let me give you privileges.
Thank you.
Uh, is that working yet? Can you?
I sure can.
Okay.
All right, can you see my screen?
Well, yes, uh, yep, there you go. It's so far away in the room, I can't see it.
Try to make it bigger, I don't know if that will help you, Mike.
I can see it fine now, I moved. So the owl's looking over my shoulder now. Okay. Any board members have questions, thoughts, comments while we're looking at this?
Uh, this is basically a quarter of the year, right?
Yes.
You tell me, I can scroll, just let me know where you'd like me to.
But what, I have a question, what, what's the first, can you move up, Erica?
The revenues?
Yeah, what's original, what's that? I mean, final is what we voted on, what's, what's original?
This was original, final, we're with any, um, transfers. I believe, so this was the original budgeted and your final budgeted.
Yeah, so in this case.
Sometimes there are chances, sometimes there are changes.
Right, nothing's changed at this point, but if we make. That column just carries throughout the year, in case we make changes in the budget.
Right.
On some forms, that's referred to, um, the left column would be approved and the right column would be adjusted.
Move down? Thanks. I'm all set, thank you.
Any other board member discussion, the Revenue and Expense Report?
No, the, um, the treasurer said that she saw no issues. The only question I would have would be just about pacing of the year and where we are. Generally, at this point in the fall, what, you know, cost-wise. Um, but so many of these things are timed at different. Times of year, so that makes it not really a perfect game as far as. The percentages of cash flow.
Okay, Erica, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, on my agenda here. Okay, uh, that concludes new business then, um, correspondence. Uh, you have, uh, everything in there, and I just wanted to let people know, um, that. There was a correspondence that the board member saw about the ambulance salaries. Um, and, uh, Erica and Chief Moore and I will be meeting. Tomorrow at 12:30, uh, so he can explain that more, uh, to us. And, um. Figure out where that goes next, if there's action that's going to come to the Board of Finance in the future or whatever, but we're, we're going to. Kind of go over what's going on and get a status update from the chief tomorrow. And, uh, like I said, you have everything else for the correspondence. So we'll go back to present to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak? If so, unmute yourself and please call out your name. All right, seeing none, um, we'll go on to good and welfare, um. I did want to mention, this is the last meeting of this term. So, um, there is the potential that some of the members of this board, uh, might be different after elections, um. And, uh, certainly we know, uh, Mr. Clark is leaving the seat he's in in the board. And I just want to say. This time we've been working together so far has been really unexpected and challenging, and, um. I want to thank everyone who's been. Grinding through this over the last couple of years, and certainly even people who came late in this term. For the hard work and the ramp up and learning as we all went together through it and helping me. Manage meetings. And I think we've done. Good work and prudent work with the taxpayer money. And I look forward to us moving into the fall and, um. I guess I look forward to us moving back into budget season soon. So I just want to say thank you to everyone, thank you, Matt, for, um, how you've challenged me and made me see other perspectives. And, um, we will see for everyone here on the board, uh, what the next few weeks brings.
Thank you.
My help?
Um.
Can I just ask a quick question? Has anyone heard anything about CIP, um, reconvening? Because I know at one point. There was discussion about it being earlier, trying to get a jump on it, doing it early in the year.
Nothing yet.
No, I think we'll be in our normal cycle.
Okay.
Thank you.
Peter?
Uh, move to adjourn.
All second. All those in favor say aye and wave goodbye.
Aye.
Thank you all, good night.
Night.
Good night.